Welcome, called to order, meeting in the Cotton County Planning Commission. We have the hearing today. On new pit, before we get to that, we have to wait a couple of minutes before we can start. We will look at the minutes from January ten, twenty twenty-three.
No, you're there.
I don't think, no, that's what I remember.
Are the Deucen's?
Deucen's violation here.
Yeah.
We're doing good, don't we? Yeah.
You got more than him, I'm not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, look at us, man.
Notice how he didn't even hesitate to say, mm-hmm.
Right, it was just a matter of prioritizing him at this point.
He's got the most garbage and most complaints.
Correct, correct.
Keeping a tally.
Is he keeping his building set up there? What is he keeping that clean?
I guess that's city.
City, I don't care what city.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second? Sure. We move by, hey, second by norms to approve, approve the minutes from January ten, twenty twenty-three as presented. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, whole thing, motion carries. Before we start, before we open the public hearing, it's customary to introduce those present for the record. My name's Phil Harder-Montlake, part of the planning commission.
He's in, same.
Lizzy Cartwright, my question.
Alex Schultz, planning zoning.
Brianna Wagner, taking no minutes.
Brett Mickey, applicant for conditional use. Norm Holman, County County Commissioner.
How do you answer the finding?
Okay, thanks for being here today. Will you say your name one more time?
Brett.
You're the Brett on that page.
Brett.
This time I will call to order the public hearing for conditional use permit submitted by RE Mickey Sand and Gravel Incorporated. Representative is Brett Mickey, who's with us here today. Alex, I would ask you to read the legal notice this time.
An application has been submitted by Brett Mickey requesting a conditional use permit required by Cotton, Cotton County ordinance number thirty-six, operation of sand gravel pit on a parcel of the property described as the south half of the northeast quarter, lying west of State aid, County Route thirteen, section thirty-one, Dale Township, Cotton County, Minnesota. Public hearing considers said conditional use permit will be held by the Cotton County Planning Commission on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at one thirty P.M. The hearing will be held at the library at the Park Center, ten twelve Fifth Avenue, Wyndham, Minnesota, five six one oh one. For any questions, please call five oh seven eight three two eight three seven.
Okay, thank you, Alex. And then you want to present your request at this time?
Yeah, so purchase had twenty-seven odd acres, I don't remember the exact, knowing that there was some sand and a little rock in there. Not sure exactly, you know, we, we're set up to make several different products, you know, and some will be agriculture-related, commercial, and governmental projects, you know, if you supply for multitude of projects potentially. So we process, you know, we mine and process all in-house, I guess I would say. And could be from anywhere from base material for roads to concrete materials possibly. That might be a stretch. And maybe some hot mix materials. And that's basically what we're looking at. Most of the, the overbird type stuff, most of it anyway, would have to probably stay on site for reclamation. Like the black dirt, you know, there's always a market for that, let's say, or some clays, but I don't know how much of that we would be able to let go to do the reclamation properly, I would say.
Okay, thank you. You have some questions from the planning commission, any? You're welcome.
And since this is a new adventure, it's, we many times discuss traffic in and out onto the county road, but, like I say, you probably don't really have a good handle on how many some ways, maybe straight trucks or some ways, I mean, might be going in and out on a day fifteen, twenty?
I would say, you know, it depends, it's probably going to be more project oriented, if there's a project, you might have a two-week window where it's fairly active. And then when a certain project is done, let's say, then it isn't going to be an everyday affair. And if it is, that would be very minor traffic. But yeah, at this point, I don't have a set amount that I know what's going to happen.
Doing another que, we go through a series of questions that, at the end, regarding the findings of that. Another one will be signage? Do you anticipate any signage out there?
If, if it's called for, I guess I don't.
No, it is not called for. It's not required. Am I right on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we might require, require truck hauling.
Oh.
Truck hauling at that time, but you don't have to have a business sign.
Business sign as well.
Business sign.
I was, I was referring to business sign.
I don't think we have a permit for that.
Anything over two by, two, three by four being a building permit?
Okay. I guess I haven't thought about that, but I'll keep it under two by four, I can do that.
Yeah, you know, and the days, if, if you would have a larger project, then there'd be a lot of truck traffic, then it'd be good to put a signage.
Yeah.
You know, a few hundred feet on either side of the entrance that would say trucks hauling.
It appears we'll share the same roads like what the other pit to the south uses, you know, on a periodic basis. And I imagine it's a temporary sign maybe, then on, on a heavy traffic situation where we, we could address that with a sign and sandbags and weight down on them.
Always kind of nice to run the traffic.
Yeah.
Yep.
How much, how much will the traffic increase then if the other gravel pits are hauling at the same time that yours is hauling? Are we going to see a substantial increase in traffic on, on County thirteen?
At times, there, yeah, for sure, there will be more, I wouldn't say substantial, it's not a huge reserve area, you know, that we're talking about.
Not like the quarries. Not like the Red Rock Quarry is a new one every day.
Oh, yeah, not even close, I wish. But yeah, there won't be probably, if there's overlapping projects, it could get.
Give it all, no?
Yeah, for those steady.
You don't have any, do we have to get permitted the other pits if they were getting renewed? If the other pits were going to start taking out, would we have to get them re-permitted, or can they take out anytime? The other gravel pits.
I'm thinking that. Every five years, they have to get their.
Every five years, yeah, so that's, this would be two, correct?
Correct, yeah, this is going every five years.
They get renewed, it's not, it's not like a new permit.
Correct.
Right, hired on gravel.
Kind of check on work.
Yep.
Basically.
See if there's any, see if they're going to dig out any deeper, or if you're going to expand, that kind of stuff.
Do you know any wells or abandoned wells on this property?
I don't believe there was any, no, there wasn't any on the.
Twenty-seven acres?
Yeah, as far as on the legal docs, there was nothing listed on there for well, there's no wells on that.
On the, on the size, what is the limit before we kind of jump to that next level of, is it?
I'm actually going to, I'm looking that up right now. I think it's for.
And what's our bonding?
Okay, it is a good material.
Bonding requirement.
Uh, the bonding requirement, I was going to get to that, is five thousand for the first five acres. And then a thousand per acre after that. I don't, I can't quite find how many acres you're going to be mining or you're going to dig.
Probably twenty-six, just with setbacks and that, I don't know if we'd get that far.
I'm going to look up the, just to make sure, I'm going to look up the, you know, EAW statutes. We're going to want to stay under the EAW.
That's forty, okay. If that's a statewide thing, that's.
He said it's forty acres?
Yep.
Oh, I see, I was thinking it might be twenty-five, but I'm really.
Then you got to go to the environment, you got to do environmental.
Review.
Assessment or?
Uh, review.
Or worksheet?
Worksheet, yes.
Assessment worksheet?
Yep.
Worksheet, yeah.
Not a, yeah, not an impact statement, but a worksheet. That's quite a, quite a procedure, takes a while.
The quarries on water, did they? At least the west one.
Red Rock did.
Did, we had, did.
Surock, I think, did one before me, ten years ago maybe. Or, or I think it's called, Minnesota, it's some company out of Mankato, MNT or something like that.
I bet it's our business, I suppose you got a project lineup for this gravel? Getting a lineup for a big?
Well, yeah, actually we do, I got one small one.
In the county or out of it?
In the county.
Oh.
Yep, right here on the edge of Wyndham.
Oh.
Their, uh, that, that copper replacement where they go up to Highway sixty to south here.
Home for great men township.
Is that what it is? There's a copper that's low and then that, there's about a quarter mile of road that must be getting kind of beat up there. Yep.
Oh, okay.
So I was kind of hoping this would work because that's where I quoted him out of, the project.
Fuel storage on site, is it going to be just portable?
Portable.
Well, if you need to, you'll come in with a trailer that's got fuel.
Correct. Yep.
Are there any, for what's in there's residence?
Okay. Well, it'd be to the west.
There's a way to west too, isn't there? Isn't it a couple of miles west you get into somebody?
No.
Isn't that far?
Before you go up that grade, but it's, it's probably a mile or three quarters, probably three quarter of a mile. I don't know if it shows up on these maps or not. There's actually another gravel pit between us and that person.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless there's something to the south right on the oil that I'm not thinking of, heading towards Wyndham, I, I don't recall. Map doesn't go that far.
That's a good sign.
So there is one concern that kind of comes with the statute. Is that, that's the Des Moines River going past. On, it's kind of hard to see, on the corner there, the Des Moines River gets within about a hundred fifty feet.
Okay.
That needs to stay, if we, if we're not going to do on EAW, that needs to stay at least three hundred, the, the acres just around there, there needs to be a three hundred foot border between the river right there and where you're setting. Because that, anything within that three hundred feet is called sensitive, sensitive shoreline area.
Okay.
And if you're doing over twenty acres, sensitive shoreline, you need an EAW. So there's, like, you're, you're good, you're good until you just get to this corner right here where it dips in, the river get dips in. So right along, right along there, there's going to have to be at least a three hundred foot buffer.
Okay, that's why.
Because anything, so according to the statute, if you are to mine within that sensitive shoreline area, you can only mine up to twenty before, twenty acres before you get into an EAW. And I don't, I don't think you want to go through an EAW process right now, I think it just takes time and effort.
Now, we do, we're along the Des Moines River in Murray County. And there they always, the DNR always says fifty feet from the high water mark.
Well, I mean, we, you can go, you can go within fifty feet.
Okay.
But if you're doing twenty-six acres, you're going to need an EAW in order to know.
That's interesting, that size, the size of the.
Yep.
So if your other, if your other corner doesn't have any gravel in it, say, and you can keep it under twenty, you could go right up to that corner. So you just have to determine where your gravel's at.
Sure.
Your best gravel's at.
Just flag off that, yeah, so I think, I checked on Beacon yesterday, from the ordinary, about the ordinary high watermark, you're about a hundred fifty-ish, two hundred seventy-ish feet.
Okay.
From the border of your property. So you, you'll have, I mean, you, you'll have to go in about a hundred fifty feet, but just on that corner there. Everything else is free game.
Okay, place with black dirt.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could put all your reclamation during the corner there, so.
You just can't mine within three hundred.
Yeah, correct.
So this be like years process, how long would it be there?
You know, what, you know, right now, I just, I don't have a lot of, I don't have anything set in stone as the customers, you know, and contract for a set amount per year. So it's, it's hard to put a time on because we just don't know what the future brings, so.
You got five premier, five years on the brand? Nobody knows what tomorrow's going to be.
Yeah, but I mean, we have no, I, I don't have a certain contract or them trying to supply, I, you know, I can give you a really clear answer at all.
When the, when the mine is spent, basically, what's the, just a real basic reclamation plan, what do you, you know, what do you plan to do on?
Well, I think more times than not, it's hard to tell how deep we can go just perfectly yet, you know, I mean, if we're going to be tickling the water quite a bit or not. So there probably wouldn't be vegetation down there other than what grows in the sand, if there is any, but it'll probably be underwater three or five years, let's say. So it'll just be sloped around the edge of, what is it, three to one or four to one?
Four to one.
Four to one?
Yeah.
Would be my best guess.
So it's safe for people?
Yeah. However, can be maintained nor whatnot.
Are we from the Red Rock wells, are we quite a ways distance from that?
I, I think so, I think it's.
A mile.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the Red Rock well, the, that new building that went up, what, I think that's, what'd you say?
At least, at least a mile.
I would, yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I was going to say at least over a half mile, but yeah, that's probably at least a mile. There's another gravel pit, I think, south.
South of the chosen region.
Yeah, so.
Is that, is that well north of the pit or the south, south of the pit?
Before I, before I made a move on this, I talked to Alex, and we're not in the, well, protection area.
No, I don't think, you know, don't do waste water or anything like that.
Hours of operation, some, I mean, and that would depend upon contractors and that type of. Yeah, I would say, you know, six, six A.M. to seven at night would be the latest, and that, those would be the extremes.
And, and that would be the same for the crusher?
Mm-hmm. Now, when I think about that, if we had, you know, hot mix going or something out of there, those guys will work till, you'll have some miscellaneous activity or some, you know, making sure they're keeping their materials warm or whatever.
Right now, that's just separate permit, so we would put it.
Yeah, sure.
For them specifically.
Yeah.
At that time.
But processing the, it would just be during the six A.M. to seven P.M.
Does the hot mix have to have a special permit?
Yes.
Yep, conditional. And we have, we have to renew that every single year, or, I mean, they close, they technically close, it expires on November thirtieth, I think we usually set the date for every single year.
Oh, those are annual thing?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, I don't think, no, is there any staging map as to where you'd actually start digging? Or, or is this staging a little bit here? I see your access roads are on the south end of that township road.
Yeah.
If, if you were to actually start getting up towards the northern end, would you still drive all the way through your property to access?
More than likely, we would try to.
Okay.
If we have to change, I suppose, you know, to move. The question I was going to have after we see how we do here is, there's a little triangle to the north of us, and we have county owns, and I, I don't know if I talked to someone here about that, it, that would sure be nice if county considered selling that, and then give us a staging area, let's say, someday so you can mine this small little piece completely, because you always need a, a place to sit and then give us access to more of the air to get on our property, which is probably good for the area in the long run too.
Is that one north is our, man, yep, that pretty much cleared up? Tony, I would, I would take for the three.
Yeah, I'm sure there's material down in the water, but like on mine, it gets quite fine, and, I mean, it is anyway, but when you get down to the H two O, it gets.
Articulate river.
Articulate river. Yeah, well, no, I mean, the material itself though is.
Oh, the material was, oh.
Gets different, not as desirable, let's say.
I'll have to be Nick Klisch to talk to, our county engineer.
Okay, alright.
He, I invited him here, he said he, he has some comments, just one kind of, but he, he said he wouldn't be able to make it to the meeting today. The right he usually is, I think he usually is.
Continue to ask questions, but this time I'll open the hearing up to public comment and ask Alex if he received any public comment.
So our county engineer contacted me, and the only comment that he had was that if this gets approved, then have, what's the, uh, the correct version? Uh, shoot, anyway. Have road authority, we have Mickey, or Mickey Sand and Gravel work with the road authority on maintaining roads. That be set as a condition. So, and that would be County, County Road thirteen, which would be Nick Klisch, and then is that three hundred seventy-fifth street? With your access?
On the south?
Yeah, their accesses, I think that's three hundred seventy-five street, so that. So Dale Township and Nick Klisch, who you guys will want to work with, just to make sure that road's maintained properly.
Sure.
That's, that's got to be the biggest complaint I get out of all the other pits in Cotton County. Not going to name pits, but that's, that's almost, almost the number one.
Well, the township road would have to be maintained by both parties, because they both are going to be using that same road.
I mean, that's, regardless though, they would work out that deal, because they're with the, they're just working with the road authority. We just put it as a condition that they're working with the road authority.
Right, yep. But they just stand on highway. You hoping just to stand on highway?
No, no, our access will come out to the south.
Out on the gravel, then you come over to the highway.
Yeah.
Oh, just like the other gravel pit does.
Yeah, it would be just that spot too, like, just where they.
It looks like your accesses, you know, south, east corner.
I kind of left it open for two, just because we're not sure.
Oh, and then the one there on the south west end, okay.
Just, just to have it for an option, yeah.
So yeah, that was the only comment I got, I didn't get him called up for that, on this.
That was the only comment he received.
Correct.
Pulled the.
So how long, so how far is this, the many actual feet is that on the south side going into the road?
I'm guessing it's. Quarter, it'd be within a quarter mile, I would say.
Kind of what it looks like, yeah.
I'm guessing on that, a little bit.
Scale that a little more. Yeah, it's about a quarter mile. They got a scale on the bottom of that picture.
You know, I'm aware that they do, they did very well, could be. Kind of a new stage.
If the county had to stage, would you just go right around that way then, if you had a crush? Talked about that north or that small triangle?
Yeah, then, then maybe we would, um, there's an existing exit that's already there.
So then you would go on the gravel less.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Now, does that, if they, if they are able, you know, you mentioned, Mr. Mickey mentioned that county's property to the, to the north, that small triangle. If they were able to stage it, does that change the permit? Or is the permit just for the mining area basically, and they could stage?
Uh, it's not part of the conditions, so they could pretty much, yeah, if it's agreed with, if it's agreed between him and the county engineer, they could pretty much do whatever they want.
So it's where they mine is what we're talking about, not where they stage equipment?
Correct, yeah, unless you want to put it in the conditions, which I don't.
Otherwise, you know, they're, they're not committed to staying on this site where they're staging and processing and process. There's a processing as part of this permit. Yeah.
It is, it is part of the permit.
Item number six, Phil, processing will be questioned and screened on the edge of agriculture.
Question will be required.
If it came to that point, you might have to come back, you might have to come back and just do a.
I think it just pertains to that.
Yeah, this side here, so.
Yeah, yeah, we usually do things just parcel by parcel basis.
I can believe that.
Just so you understand that, if, you know, if that does happen, I'll go, you might have to take that step, this step again. Any other questions at this time? I'm going to ask Alex to lead us through the findings of fact, and if we have more questions after that, which, and those are open for discussion.
Okay. Uh, criteria for granting conditional use permits. In granting a conditional use permit, the Cotton County Board should give consideration to the advice and recommendations of the planning commission and the effect of the proposed use upon the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the occupants of surrounding lands. Among other things, the planning commission shall make the following findings worth considering. Question one, has it been determined that this use will not create excessive burden or hazard on existing parks, schools, streets, and other public facilities and utilities which serve or propose to serve the area? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Any findings there?
Condition on roads.
Condition on what?
On roads for maintaining road.
You mean with the road authorities?
Yep. Question two, will the use interference of the site be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening for agricultural or residentially zoned or used land so that existing homes and adjacent residential properties will not be depreciated in value or adversely affected? Yes or no?
Yes. Questions?
You could say there's already adjacent gravel pits, operational.
It's almost a land use at this point. Question three, has it been determined that the proposed use will not have a detrimental environmental effect? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we have to maintain that distance on the, the south. To the Des Moines. West corner.
Yep. Yeah.
Nor nor wells? Or abandoned wells? Or sealed wells, probably not to give up.
Has it been determined that the business or advertising signs will not be visible or adjacent, uh, vis, not, excuse me, will not be visible to adjacent dwellings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is the use, in the opinion of the planning commission, reasonably, reasonably related to the overall needs of the county, the existing land use and the county comprehensive land use plan?
Yes.
Is the use consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use? Has it been determined that the use will no, will not cause traffic hazard or congestion? And has it been determined that existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment, customer trade brought about by intrusion of noise, glare, or general unsuiting us?
Yes, yes. I think the money still might have a say in it.
Yeah. They're, they're, they've taken all.
You can get where they didn't get.
Play it on them. If all answers are yes by the majority of the planning commission, the criteria for granting of a conditionally used permit have been met. A conditionally used permit will maintain the goals of the health, safety, and general welfare of the public.
Okay, so if they read that, the sense of, the finding vision, will that majority answer yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And, uh, are there any other questions on the application at this time? I'm ready to move to recommend the Cowan County Board Commissioner's approval pending a second motion with conditions.
Also.
Sorry. I'm being, I'm being seconded by Keith to recommend to the Cowan County Board Commissioner's approval of the conditionally used permit from, um, Mickey Sand and Gravel for mining the gravel pit, Dale Township. Is there any discussion? Discussion here, none of us in favor, motion say aye?
Aye.
I hold same. Motion carries.
Want me to read through?
More than a condition, yeah.
Okay. Um, so what we would normally do for gravel pit, I accidentally put down one for an asphalt, but it stinks, but I, I'll, um, so the ones we usually do are, um, be compliant with ordinance number thirty-six and twenty-eight, that's one. Um, have, obtain all local, state, federal, uh, permits and fees to, that would include the bond as well, which we'll, we'll go over, uh, over again in a second here. Have a waste receptacle on site during construction. Uh, mend dot signage, um, or follow, it's gonna be, follow the mend dot signage rules and regulations as well as truck routes approved by road authority. I don't, I don't think they'll need the truck routes approved by road authority on this case. Because I think you guys only have one, one path or two, we don't, you know, we're not cutting through any gravel roads or anything for this one.
So just for the mend dot signage, that would be to put the trucks hauling.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's all that, that's all that.
Maybe, I don't know, how many feet, thousand feet either side of the driveway or something, whatever they would.
If mend out requires it essentially, just put it up, um, or did, yeah, or put it up by, you know, just so people are aware, um, but erosion control measures taken. And then, um, have a proper maintenance plan, um, working through all road authorities, which in this case would be Nick Klisch for the county and then, um, maybe just for that quarter mile there, talk to Dale Township, um, just say, you know, we're, we'll make sure that these accesses are not gonna get out of control. We're not gonna tear apart this part of the road here. A little, one that I would suggest adding, um, uh, would be stay three hundred, keep a three hundred foot buffer from the Des Moines River, um, as a condition.
Can we flag that?
For the mining. Go out there.
Part of it.
Yep, yep, for the mining, uh, go out there and actually, if I.
That's so.
I think you may be wanting that, is actually where.
Stay away, you can help, sure.
Yeah, I, I could definitely do that, yep.
Technically, we wouldn't have to do anything, the E W would, I mean, that would be sad.
We really, really do not wanna trigger the E W. It's not, not a bunch of.
If he comes and puts a deal for you, then you know, hey, then I got.
Yeah, and you could put dirt there or whatever, as long as you keep that fifty foot buffer.
Okay.
Um, you could put dirt there or whatever, the fifty foot buffer is on, not even on your property, so you don't even have to worry about that.
See.
Um, yeah, just stay out of the, the, just line for not like.
Okay.
So I would, I would say put that in as another condition, but that's up to you guys.
I think so, yes. I think it helps protect him.
Sure.
You know, that's your job, Alex.
Yep.
We have seven conditions right now that Alex suggested, so one.
I would make a motion to move those seven conditions.
Okay, second. Move by Norm, second by Lindsay to, um, seven, seven conditions that Alex read. Is everyone comfortable with what they are?
Is he here?
Very comfortable with the seven.
Oh, yeah, because you need to, I was ready to set a barrel or put some.
Right, the, the waste receptacle is when you're operating, just, it can be a barrel, it can be the back of a pickup, it can be, you know, but that'd be.
Yeah, so, I mean, guys got bottled water and they need to throw them someplace or whatever.
Crash off across the island. Yeah, I could throw them in the land.
You see a loader going up the alley, he's just gonna.
It's one big waste receptacle.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on conditions? On the, on the buffer, were we making part of the wording that Alex will, or that the, where the officer post the flag?
I'll just go out there and do it, I don't think you need to put that in, just keep a three hundred foot buffer. I'll flag it on.
Ordinary high watermark, is that the?
Correct, yeah, that would be the most.
Ordinary high watermark of the Des Moines River.
Yeah.
Are they just protection?
Yep. The D and R can't flag you either, are also fun to deal with.
Yeah, he's, he's over muscle and.
Or, or the high job, this is a.
You got a bigger gun?
About it all.
And erosion control is just basically the burms, probably?
Yep, yep, maybe a self fence normally, but you have to burn everything up.
And seeding, I think, that's also the thing, I gotta keep it, you know, seeded.
Yeah, the, the, burn the black area once you, you have that dirt out, it'll be covered.
There is, um, there's programs through, I think it's the M B A, they're try, they're starting, they started this a couple of years ago. It's trying to, every gravel pit, they ask, um, uh, weed inspectors to say, um, try to get your gravel pit weed free. Um, I think that if you want, if you're interested in that kind of program, just kinda go, go into the, um, M B A website. And me.
And there's a Department of.
Middle, oh yeah, Department of A, the website.
Weed free.
Um, they're trying to, I, I think they're trying to stop the spread of things like wild parsley, which is huge around here. Um, and a lot, it's very easy for the, the dirt, when you, when you dig the dirt up and you get the seed baiting out and then on the burms, they start growing, weeds start growing, and then they just fly everywhere. So they're, they're just trying to keep, uh, gravel pit owners aware of that. Because you, I mean, technically someone can go complain about it and then you had to take care of it anyway. But, just so you, just so you know.
Okay.
And further discussion? Three, nine of us in favor of the seven conditions, say aye?
Aye.
I hold same, motion carries. Any other business for this public hearing?
Uh, the bonds will be.
Bonds for the, oh yeah.
If, bond will be, uh, if it's twenty-six acres, it'll be twenty-six thousand.
Is that as we expand?
It is as they expand.
Correct, it is, yeah, so if you wanna start, whatever number you wanna start at for acres, that's the bond you'll have to put in.
It's initially five thousand if we don't go beyond five acres, correct?
Correct, yep, it's five thousand for the first.
Yeah, so a question on that, and I don't know if that's for today, can, will an ILOC letter work from a bank?
That's, I think that's usually how we do it, then we keep it in the county, um, auditor's office. And so it's proof that there's, there's money there in case.
Yep.
Something happens and you never reclaim it.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, usually they go through escrow or, sure, or, sure, there's a bunch of funds, I'm not very familiar with.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's all I got.
Any other, please, for this hearing? Your number this hearing is adjourned.
Uh, when's the, when's this call in front of the board?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, April fourth.
Either you call Alex or you'll call here, whatever.
Yeah, and I.
I just, I'll.
Your presence wouldn't necessarily.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, if, if there was something.
I, I'll.
If there was something contentious, I mean, if there'd be a half a dozen people here, neighbors.
Could you wind it off?
But I, this is pretty strict.
Okay. The county, yeah, the county commissioners, I don't think they've ever gone against the planning, the planning commission's.
Okay.
Um, decisions.
Sure.
So, I'll go, I bring it up, it takes about five minutes, I bring it up, I say what was said here and then.
But you don't want me there, then Alex.
Uh, it might, it might just be a waste of your time, I don't wanna go, yeah, go stop grooming dial or something like that, way out.
Uh, however, we as a county, you dealing with this from what your experience is?
Um, good.
Are we did Mickey, or pretty straight up, or you like?
Uh, you're careful.
I was trying to get, I'm trying to get better, you know?
Um, we just did one in Lyon County, we're just into the, and, uh, so how should I say, there, it's a little more laid back, I would say. But the questions you all asked me are perfectly legit and you've covered all the bases, so I think whatever you're doing is working.
I would've done, we haven't done much on roads, but our highway engineers have been commenting more on roads. He wants the quarries to stay on somebody wonderful kid, which makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, something like that.
Yeah, it's a pretty good concentration of traffic and, you know.
We've done, and.
And you.
The two red rock quarries that we have are, they get a little contentious too. Um, so I think, you guys as a planning commission have dealt that time in, time out, so you, they're, they know the questions that they're asking.
Sure.
At this point, I'll make sure you cover all your bases.
Yep, no, I'd say you covered the base as well and they were perfectly great questions. Nothing I've heard before.
I'm trying to get better at it.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, the one that I wasn't, I'm just not used to, and that's not anything here, is that three hundred foot, I didn't realize there was an acre, uh, you know, if it's over twenty acres.
Oh, yeah.
That makes a difference.
That's just, yeah, that's that Minnesota statute.
That's nothing with the county, that's Minnesota, right?
Correct, yeah.
It's Minnesota, yeah.
Yeah, you can go up to forty, as long as you're not in shoreline. Um, any, any sensitive, in a sensitive shoreline area, forty acres are forested or other naturally vegetated land and non-sensitive, or I mean, twenty acres in a sensitive shoreline area or forty acres in a non-sensitive. Oh, excuse me. We might actually, might have to look into that, we might actually get rid of that condition. Because there's a difference between sensitive shoreline and norm, non-sensitive shoreline. Sensitive shoreline, I think, would be a duisma. And I don't think this, this is, if I'm not mistaken, we looked and there was not a duisma, correct?
Yeah, I, I wasn't interested in this, if it's a duisma. Well, I shouldn't say that, I would have to have looked into what all the extra criteria would have been.
I'm gonna look into what, what's considered a non-sensitive shoreline area and then, um, I'll do that before we get to Tuesday.
Okay.
And if we want an extra condition, we'll have the commissioners do it.
You know, they're gonna clean it up and make sure.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I gotta look up the.
What if somebody reads it? Find a print, I'll get two, yes.
Oh, yeah, it's the association's statute, so it's fine.
But it's, you know, a lot of it's spelled out in county ordinance, twenty-six and thirty-six and, I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with all these things.
Right, yeah. You bet.
Those are all your responsibility.
Yep.
You got a lot of work lined up for the year elsewhere, something?
Uh, it's a little bit quieter so far, I would say, compared with the last few years have been, you know, so far.
Okay.
That can change pretty quick, but, so, yeah, it's, you know, you listen to the news, you can't expect it to be much different. So, but no, I, I, we'll just have to wait and see, but we got a fair amount going on. But not like the last several years, it's a little quieter.
Alex, you want to record each other?
Um, yeah, I got one, well, we have one more thing to discuss.
I'm outta here then.
You're free to go.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Thank you very well, appreciate that.
Well, actually, no, you probably, you could probably add a, you wanted to.
Okay, the hearing's adjourned.
Okay.